April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. And it is six oh three P M. And can I please have everybody stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Now, I'm gonna make the announcement again 'cause it's bold red lettering here. The town meeting for the start of this special town meeting is gonna be at eleven thirty. And the regular meeting, the annual, will be at twelve o'clock P M. And that is gonna be on May fourteenth. You didn't put it on there?
No.
On May fourteenth. Okay. There we go. All right. So tonight, we have the school here to discuss some budget questions that we're looking at. When we're going over the budget, a lot of things started popping up to what we had. And I think it's changed the last time since it was in the booklet?
Yes. Sherry actually has an updated budget for everyone tonight.
Can you give it to us?
Oh, terrific.
So one of the things, do you guys wanna come up front?
Sure.
So right off the bat, you guys are asking for a significant amount more this year than previous years. And with that, we've been going through the budget and noticing a lot of things from the booklet budget that you gave us. You just gave us a more current budget, which is different from what you gave us in the booklet. And the way it was laid out is different. So we're just looking at that here.
I give you the current FY twenty-two budget.
Yep.
Where we are today.
Yep.
The budget book that you have was a snapshot as of March fourteenth. So all of your actual numbers are not gonna match up to this thing report.
So you're just gonna miss in a quarter?
Pretty much.
Okay. And that's one of the things we're looking at, is you were missing a quarter, but it wasn't really specific on that. It seemed like it was your actual numbers of what you've actually spent. So there were discrepancies on what you've asked for and then what you're actually spending. What you're spending was a lot less than what you were actually asking for. So when we're looking at the numbers, to your, for an example, you were saying like one point three million dollars, you know, what you had. And then what you're actually spending was like five hundred thousand something dollars. So that's a big discrepancy from what you asked for and what you have to what you're actually spending along that budget line. So we're wondering why there were so many discrepancies going through for that. And if that's the case and you're not spending all the money, why are you asking for more?
So it would help if you were specific.
Yeah.
In like, I mean, in general terms, I understand what you're saying. And I would say in general terms, what happened with our special education expenses, as I outlined at the last meeting, is they went way up. Now, couple that with the fact that last year, in this, in last year's budget book, we used seven hundred thousand to offset the budget, okay? So right there, there's an additional seven hundred thousand that was used for, from S R two, okay? This year, in this year's budget, so seven hundred thousand right off the top last year, one-time funds doesn't exist for next year's budget. For this year's budget, this budget book does not include S R three. What we're going to do is we're gonna go to the school committee. The next meeting is April twenty-fifth. And we're gonna talk to the school committee about what funds we can use from S R three. What that will do is that will significantly reduce the amount that we're asking for at town meeting. Will it be, you know, nothing above minimum? Absolutely not, but it will reduce it. And I think we were very clear last time that we didn't include any S R three. We didn't include any circuit breaker funds and...
Two forty grand.
The two forty grand.
The IDA grant.
So those are discussions that we're gonna have with the school committee on April twenty-fifth. Now, I talked to Jim earlier today. And I think in my mind, one of the things that we've done in the past is we've had a joint meeting with Warren and Westbrookfield. Maybe that's where we want to go and, you know, have that. We'll have better numbers after April twenty-fifth. And then we can talk about that. But we're more than happy to defend any specific line, any questions that you have.
So that would be a meeting between the select boards and the school board? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, what we've done, exactly. So I would say select boards from both towns, finance committees or advisories from both towns, as well as the school committee. And, you know, let's, let's...
So with that, and I'm all for that. We did that last year too.
Yeah.
And it was good going back and forth because I knew Westbrookfield has some concerns too.
Mm-hmm.
And again, you're one of the budgets because you're the biggest budget. People are gonna look at you the most and look at ways to save. And you have that half the town wants to fund you more. And the other half wants to cut your budget completely because they don't have kids in the school either. So you're always weighing that in between.
Yeah.
And we're in the middle trying to make the best decision possible for all residents while trying to help the school too. You know, all of us wanna see good for the school. And we wanna make sure you guys are good. We just need to make the numbers make sense to us. Because I can't go in front of the town and say, yes, I'm confident with what's going on here and confident with this budget when I'm seeing FY budget numbers, FY twenty-two budgets, and then actual number being a hundred, a hundred thousand dollar difference. You know, in a quarter, I don't think you're spending that much money in a quarter all of a sudden.
So it would be helpful if you were, like, the specific line?
So admin principal's office.
Which page?
On page seven. I'm just picking out a line here. So what it looks like is, and correct me if I'm wrong, it says FY budget for that particular line, three hundred and eight thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars. FY twenty-two, year-to-date actual, one hundred and ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars.
And then FY twenty-three budget is way above what you're actually at.
What you're asking for, yeah. So why is there...
FY twenty-three is only thirty-three hundred dollars difference.
Was that...
Compared to FY twenty-two.
So it's a one...
But the budget is only three thousand. But we're saying you budgeted three oh eight, right? You're spending just under two hundred, right? But now you're asking for three eleven.
That just doesn't make sense to us.
So if we said, if we said, okay, increase your budget by five percent, we would expect that you would take the actual around two hundred and add five percent, not take your budget amount and add five percent, let's say?
When you didn't use that month?
Yeah, there seems to be, like David said, a hundred thousand dollars that's, right? That's a third of that budget is still...
Still there.
There.
Well, our current FY twenty-two year-to-date is actually now two thirty-two, nine twenty-four on that line item.
What page is that on this one?
It's, it's, it's a, the report that I gave you, you have to actually add up all of the lines that have the one oh one in the locate... You see the, you've got the ten thousand dot two. That tells me that it's Warren. Anything with a two in it is Warren.
Okay.
And then you have, you'd have to add up everything that has the one oh one in the fourth position.
So that's one line?
So it's one line, but it's a matter of adding at least like ten different account numbers to come up with that one line.
Okay.
Yeah, way too confusing for us.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
We're not accountants here?
So we actually, that, we still have five more pay periods in this year. So the difference between the one ninety-eight and the two thirty-two that we've spent right now is like forty-some thousand. So you need to actually take that times your next five pay periods.
Okay, how about the line that's, two lines below that? The instruction elementary? You budgeted one million, seven hundred and twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. You actually used nine hundred and sixty-three thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars.
As of March fourteenth. But as of today, we've used one million, one hundred and seventy-two thousand, twenty-seven dollars. So the book that you're looking at was a snapshot of where we were on March fourteenth. So if we had a pay period that same week, those numbers already are off because of that one pay period that we would have had that week.
The program number over here?
Hold on, you went through three quarters, only spent nine hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars.
You can't actually take it by quarters.
And then in the last quarter, you're making up?
But you can't really take it by quarters because we do it everything on twenty-six pay cycles. So it's not...
Yeah, but that still doesn't make sense. All of a sudden, now you're spending the other half of that? You're basically spending almost eight hundred thousand dollars in one quarter at the end? When you used three quarters and it was only like nine hundred thousand?
Can you look on your FY twenty-one columns? And see what, FY twenty-one budget was seventeen ninety-one. We actually spent seventeen seventy-two. So we're gonna come very close to that number again in FY twenty-two.
So the only true actual numbers are FY twenty-one. FY twenty-two, we're in the midst of it. I mean, they're, we're not, those, those will not be actual until June thirtieth.
Right.
When the fiscal year ends.
Right.
So you're comparing apples to oranges here.
Right.
Is your pay period every two weeks or every one?
Every two.
Every two weeks.
So in your program number here, that's the fourth segment of your account numbers?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I see.
So you'd have to just go through and add up all of the account numbers on the budget report I gave you that has those same numbers?
Right, the one twelves, okay.
Yep. For that same location.
So tell me again, so ten thousand dot two is Warren?
Mm-hmm.
Elementary?
Mm-hmm. Ten thousand dot three is Westbrookfield.
Okay.
Ten thousand dot five is Quabog. And then ten thousand dot one is the district office. For what we call district employees and district expenses.
Okay. What about dot four?
We don't have a four.
You don't have a dot four?
I don't know why they skipped it.
Come on, where's the dot four? Just tell us.
It's the hidden budget.
Yeah, right.
The black budget.
That's the petty cash.
Petty cash.
So you could see where we're looking at that, and it's just not adding up.
Yeah.
I say us.
See, I think it does add up. And I think you are comparing oranges to apples because FY twenty-one actual, those numbers are firm to my previous point. FY twenty-two is changing daily because we're in the midst of it.
So if you look at transportation, right, twenty twenty-one actual?
Yep.
You have, what transportation for twen, for twenty?
Oh, page seven.
For page seven.
Page sixty-eight.
Yep, and it's the budget for twenty twenty-one. And you budgeted for transportation, seven hundred and fourteen thousand, thirty-one dollars. You only spent six hundred thousand and six, six hundred and sixteen dollars.
Because we were remote for the first three months of the school year. And we got a discount on our transportation expenses from both of the bus companies at the time.
So...
We had a little bit of savings. So we had a little bit of savings on the transportation just because of getting that. And they combined the school choice bus from Warren with another regular route for Warren Elementary. So they gave us another discount on top of the other discounts.
So in the case of this one hundred and fourteen thousand, does, do we get that back? If you have a surplus?
It goes in our E and D.
But it doesn't come back to the town?
It, the transportation reimbursement, the excess that we get from the state does come back to the towns.
Okay.
But the money you save within your budget?
Just goes to the E and D.
So you guys keep it?
So what we do with the E and D, just to be perfectly clear, is we apply that to the following year's budget to offset it.
You'll see on your revenue and expense sheet, we have E and D use on that. We apply our excess E and D to our next year's budget.
Where's that?
On the revenue and expense summary in your budget book, page twenty-four. You'll see where it says...
Oh, you counted as revenue?
Line twenty-eight.
Yes.
Yeah.
So I, and for FY twenty-two, we applied two hundred thousand. For FY twenty-three, right now, we only have a hundred and fifty thousand because our E and D was only two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we were trying to keep an extra hundred thousand in our E and D, which I'm sure that's probably gonna change now with all of these changes that we're still gonna be working on.
And that's gonna be a topic that we're gonna discuss on April twenty-fifth. In fact, we were talking about it today.
Right.
I think from a grand view here, and I mean, we're happy to answer any numbers that, any questions that you have regarding the budget. We used seven hundred thousand dollars, one-time funds, to offset FY twenty-two this, this current year. We're going to be talking to the school committee about using more one-time funds for FY twenty-three. Here's the trend, here's the cliff, it's getting bigger. You know, what's gonna happen in FY twenty-four? That's, it, this is something that if you look back on the budget reports, I clearly say that when you use those one-time funds, you're setting, we're setting ourselves up for a cliff. But the reason that we put forth this budget was to show the selectmen and everyone in the community, this is what it costs to run education. That, that's the, these are the true figures. We're using one-time funds to offset that. It's not a strong financial outlook. It's just not. And we've discussed this for over a decade on top of the state giving us a pittance.
So any, anytime you don't expend the full budgeted amount, it goes into the E and D, which is applied to the following...
Recording in progress.
Sorry, I lost internet here.
Yeah, I lost it here too. So I started recording when I know it. Put it back on.
Okay. So to repeat that, whenever, whenever you have a balance left over from a budgeted item, from your actual amount, say you budgeted for two hundred thousand, you only spent a hundred thousand. That hundred thousand extra goes towards your E and D, which then offsets the budget for the following year to allow for any additional items, okay?
We submit like whatever our ending balance is to the Department of Revenue. And then they certify it. And our certification always comes less than what we actually submit to them because they take into account if we've had any prepaid expenses. Like last year, we prepaid a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for our sped tuition for FY twenty-two. We prepaid that in FY twenty-one. So automatically, they take off that hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of our E and D as our extra balance because they know we're gonna be expensing it in FY twenty-two. They also take out if we have any deficits in any of our, like our cafeteria revolving account unfortunately has still been having a deficit balance because I believe it was like three years ago, there was some mismanagement of some of the funds. And so we're still trying to get that taken back out of the deficit balance. And so they, the Department of Revenue also takes out whatever we have in the deficit balance in the cafeteria account also comes right out of our E and D too. So they're kinda like covering that deficit balance by using our E and D funds to do that. So we had a deficit balance of seventy-six thousand. So that on top of the hundred and fifty thousand was also automatically taken off of our E and D amount that we submitted to them. We originally submitted four hundred and eleven thousand and we only got two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of it certified at the end of everything being all taken out.
Do you guys do periodic, like audits? Have a third party come in and audit your books?
But that's general law, we do it every year.
Every year.
Every year?
Every audit is one hundred percent public. I'm happy to forward you the recommendations from the audit. And I can tell you, thirteen years ago, when I first started in the district, we had very little in E and D. It was to the point where we were borrowing money to make payroll. And that's a cost, okay? Over time, it was built up a little bit through school choice, through some, uh, um, what I would call very diligent budgeting. That E and D number has gone down over time. It's gonna be my recommendation to the school committee on April twenty-fifth, use it all. And in the audit, in the audit reports, what the auditors recommend is they recommend to have somewhere around five percent, okay? Which I think in our budget is give or take nine hundred thousand, maybe a little bit more, somewhere around there. That's the auditor's recommendation to have, you know, somewhere around nine hundred thousand. Right now, in our E and D, we've got two fifty for next year's budget. We've applied one fifty. It's gonna be my recommendation on twenty-fifth, use it all. What that's going to do is if there are issues in the school, say a boiler breaks or, you know, you need something, the mold incident. If something like that happens, we have no other revenue. We're gonna have to go back to the towns. And that's perfectly fine with me. I, I mean, it seems to me that's the trend, that's the way that the towns want it to be. But just to be clear, that's not the recommendation from the auditors. And that's in writing in the audit reports. And those are all public documents. I'm happy to forward them to anyone.
Could you please forward those to us?
Absolutely.
So Pathfinder came back and asked for more money at the special. We have that situation. I think that probably just makes it a little more transparent for the, for the townspeople.
Yeah.
You know, 'cause now we know, okay, you have an unforeseen situation. We're back asking for money, here's the reasons, and then we can decide. I think a lot of people see this as kind of a black box, you know? They don't understand where the money goes and all that stuff.
So I'm more than happy to bring that to the school. So I'm more than happy to bring that to the school committee on the twenty fifth and I will say that publicly. And, and that's the, that's the way it will be presented is that I talked to the selectmen, they think that's a good idea, let's use it all. And, and it's still grandiose, you're still using one-time funds for the budget. Doesn't take a brain surgeon to see where you're going down the road.
No, I guess not. Although, is it possible to get an FY twenty three proposed budget in this form? Do you have it broken down like by all the accounts?
Yeah, it looks a little different though because it's still not by program code, it's still by just account numbers.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, that's fine.
I can see what, if I can create a report like that.
Okay. Because then we could go a little more like, like being able to compare this report with a new budget.
Mm-hmm.
Right, because this is current expenditures and what's the budget?
Correct.
Because this has the budget and the current.
Exactly. So the, the budgeted amount's not going to change, what's changing is the year to date.
Yes.
Obviously.
Yep.
And that's going to be different than what's in this book because this was printed in March and it's April fourteenth.
Right.
So I know we've asked you so many, a bunch of times about why is the budget going up so much from last year to this year? Can you explain exactly why and what is actually increasing those costs? What, what areas, what are you asking for at its move on?
Special education, I, I thought.
Now you say that, but.
So if you go.
In what part, how is it costing?
Tuition.
So much more?
Out of district tuition. We have two students and I thought that Brett showed you on his slideshow. We had one move in this year that was three hundred and seventy two thousand, that their tuition is going up to three ninety next year.
Three hundred and seventy two thousand?
Mm-hmm.
It's on a PowerPoint. The last one I heard was two hundred thousand, I don't remember three hundred and seventy two thousand.
Yeah, for, I believe it was like student I. It was like in the middle of the, his list of all those different students because we had to just name them A, B, C, D, E.
Right, you can't name students.
Right. And then the bottom one was two hundred and ninety eight thousand, I believe. But we said, let's just try to see if we can save two hundred thousand. And took, we took the two hundred thousand out of our budget, but we had to put it back in because he is not going to be able to attend our school. So he is going to have to go to another school, out of district school. So basically that three hundred thousand has to go back into the budget too. That's just two students.
And that's not in the budget now? So your budget's going to go up another two hundred thousand?
We tried and it wasn't successful.
Right here?
Yes. Look at student I, this is three hundred and seventy two and he's going up to, or she, I don't know.
It's going to be three hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
That's two students.
And how much do we get from the state to help for that student?
It just depends on if we get any circuit breaker.
How much do we get from the state to help for that student?
So we apply for extraordinary relief for circuit breaker. And again, we don't have that number right now. That number we'll probably get, usually it's the second week in May. That's, that will help, but that's going to help offset this year's budget because that number wasn't in this year's budget. So if you look at the FY twenty two and you see that three seventy two, if you go back in last year's budget book, not this year's, last year's budget, that number is not in there. So not only does that um, throw off the balance for FY twenty three, it throws off the balance for FY twenty two. So that's not a one-time expense, that's this year and next year that we have to.
Come up with.
Come up with.
Okay, so the state funds, how much are they going to cover if they cover anything?
We'll find out the second week in May, which is typically.
The most we've ever.
We don't, we don't know any of this until after we voted at meeting.
They don't give you a specific date when extraordinary relief comes out. I actually received the letter in, at a town meeting, like the town meeting date. So now that it's in um, a couple days later, I think we should have that number by then, I hope. But again, it's something that is not guaranteed. So there's.
And I know that she has put, the interim sped director has put in a claim for two hundred thousand. So based on all the students' IEPs and where they are and their services that they needed for this year. So I know she's put in the claim for extraordinary relief of two hundred thousand. So we're hoping we get somewhere close to that amount for our extraordinary relief. But it's all based on how disabled.
Why are you only doing two hundred thousand when?
It's a whole formula.
There's formulas, you have to meet a, a minimum balance. They call it like a foundation balance that you have to meet. And so it's your expenses above this foundation balance and it's, it's all these formulas. Like you have to take the three hundred and seventy two thousand times like a point four percent and then you take out the foundation. It's, it's a lot of different formulas and stuff.
And it's not dollar for dollar. It's not like we get the three seventy two, it will be less. We've had it happen a couple of times and it's always less. So regardless of what the number that comes in, we are left with the deficit that we have to come up with. I mean, and these are impossible to plan for. I mean, you, you just, you don't know. Other districts are, are, are struggling with it. A neighboring district actually had to have a town meeting for, for one tuition of a, of a student. I mean, that's, it is what it is. By law, you can't not pay it.
And this is only.
We're not arguing it, we're, we're trying to understand it.
Yep.
Because we're, we're seeing your budget go up a significant amount, okay? The taxes affect, are affected by that because somebody has to pay it. And, you know, we, we're crunching numbers today and it doesn't look good. It, you know, it's actually, um, we're trying to do our best. But the, the increases are killing us here. Warren's a poor community and there's a lot of other areas in town that have been suffering. And, you know, to have all our money going into one budget of schools, it, it's, it's getting increasingly harder and harder to do for, for a town the size of Warren. And, you know, when we're looking at the numbers, I don't know if you wanted to talk about your numbers yet.
Uh, I can, if you want.
So Jim's been running some numbers. And, you know, looking at him, he's, he's done his, if, if we're doing a contribution. And we're going to have to talk about that one too. Because you're, you're asking one, one point six for a contribution.
Yeah, that, that will, that number was to show you what it costs to run the schools. Again, we're going to use one-time funds to lower that number. So next year will look better. Come FY twenty four, you're going to have the same conversation and you're going to say, why is the budget going up so much? And I'm going to say, because for the past two years, you've used one-time funds, probably to the tune of one point five million.
So yeah, so I, so I understand the superintendent's issue with regards to budget increases, with regards to using one-time revenues, that's not a, a good situation to be in for, for, whether you're a school budget or municipal budget, those, that's a very dangerous situation to be in. But with regards to the above minimum contribution and just keeping it at, at a, at a level playing field, if, if we were to do something similar to, you know, something similar to, you know, what was done the previous year, I mean, you know, our budget, we would be looking at a budget growth of over eleven percent as compared to fiscal year twenty two. With kind of keeping it at that at a level playing field. And, and providing the core services for, for our town to operate along with, you know, making an above minimum investment in our schools. So we're in a very difficult situation as it is to keep our core services going and, and keeping pace with the situation that, 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 that the schools are in unfortunately.
So, you know, what it is, is we have other areas that need to increase too. Because we're running into difficulties in other areas, okay, within our town. And if we keep on telling, telling town employees, we can't give you a little more money this year because we just don't have it in the budget. And then have the school budget increase a lot more. It, it just, people's, what people are paying into the community is just not offsetting that amount. And we're losing employees because we can't keep up with their pays and we can't pay town employees what other towns surrounding us are paying. We're at a deficit of four dollars an hour for many of our employees. Meaning many other towns are paying at least four dollars or more for the same positions in, in, in surrounding towns with lower response rates. Say police officers, okay? We have a higher call volume in our town, but we pay them significantly less in our town because we can't afford to keep up with the pay rates. And in order to keep police officers, because they're doing their way with part-time police officers, we have to have all full-time police officers at some point to keep our town running. Before we could offset it with part-time, now because of state mandates and everything going on, we can't do that anymore. So the, the pays, basically Warren has become a training ground. So we're, we're training people to go to other towns. And the problem with that is we're always cycling them through. The most senior guy on our police department is what, six years?
Joey, but after him, number two is four, three, four years.
Four years? That's ridiculous. Okay, we have no long, because they come here, they get the training and they leave because they can make a lot more money somewhere else, just over the border. And it's hard to keep on saying, we can't pay you more because we just don't have it in the budget. And then seeing the school budget boom, 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 inflate and inflate and inflate. We have, we have a break-in point at that point. And I know you're, you're going to protect your, the school. We all love the school too. We all see it and then we're, we're looking at numbers and we're sitting there and we're not getting really big, kind of vague numbers. Okay, we're just looking at budget.
I take offense to the vague numbers.
I know you take offense to it.
So, so.
So can you let me talk, please?
If, yes.
Okay, so we're, we're seeing what's been budgeted and then the actual numbers. Okay, and I know you're saying, well, we're, we've still got one more quarter to go. But when you get a million dollars to spend in a fi- in a fourth quarter, I, I, I don't know how you're spending when you didn't spend that much in the three previous quarters. Okay, what are you doing to exhaust all that money all of a sudden in one quarter? I don't know if you're just, okay, paying out all accounts all of a sudden or you, whatever you're doing. It just looks, it doesn't look right, okay? To, to, and, and I'm not an accountant or anything, it just sets me off a little bit, okay? And other people are bringing these issues to us also. And again, we want you to be funded. I wish I could sit there and say, okay Brett, it's ten million dollars, make it so. Make our school the most beautiful and you've been doing an awesome job so far, it's not bashing on you. And all your staff and all, all the teachers, they're doing the best they can, okay? We love them, we, we understand that. It's, it's at a point where, and we understand, we just don't have enough revenue coming into our town to do all of this because we still have to take care of the town too. And our town is hurting right now. They, our, our police officers, they, they take, they're not making a lot at all, you know? And, and, and having, having them much more marketable now. Because it's getting a harder job to fill now. So when guys with academies can go wherever they want now, if you've got a police academy, you know, I, I can go wherever I want and then we're constantly training them. And we're always paying overtime to fill in those shifts, okay? And I'm using them for an example because we picked them apart, okay? Same with fire, you know, they, they're another big budget, highway department, another big budget. And we've picked them apart and we can't pick them apart anymore. Their, their budgets, at some point, we have to give them something. Or, or they're just, the departments are going to fail, okay? So, you know, we started looking at your budget much closer. And by doing that, we started like, oh, that doesn't seem right. And, and, and things just don't, and I understand, you know, you know, you're telling us we don't understand the numbers, but help us understand. How, how do you spend a million dollars in a quarter when you didn't spend that amount in the previous three quarters? Okay, how, how do you come up with that all of a sudden? It just, you know, and again, I disclose that I'm not an accountant, reviewing for what you guys provided us, it just doesn't seem right. And, and, and we're not here to, we're here to work together. Because again, if I'm asking you these questions, better damn well be prepared to answer these questions on the floor in town. Because you know, you guys get beat up more than anybody and I commend you on your job. You take it like a champ because you take it from us, you take it from the residents, you take it from the teachers, you take it from everywhere, okay? But people have legitimate questions and you're the man to answer them. You're in the hot seat for it. So, you know, again, I don't want you getting offended. And I know at some point you guys are going to say, F you all, I'm done. Because I'd probably be at that point at some point too. But, you know, help us understand. It's on to you now, sir.
So again, to my previous point, you're comparing apples to oranges in accounting. If there are any specific questions, we can clearly defend any line item in the budget.
Do you have something, Jim?
Um, sure, so Mr. Superintendent, you, you indicated that, that along with the tuition reimbursement that's required for special education, what is another challenge that, that you, that you face that you see as a rising cost of your, you know, of your general budget? Is it salaries, is it capital improvement projects?
So capital improvement projects are very limited, I mean, that's completely outside of the operating budget. And if you look at our capital improvement projects in Westbrookfield, they've paid zero for, for four years. I think the, the only thing that Warren has left is the gym floor and the technology is, is right about at its point. So we've specifically done very little with capital improvement to, to keep the, the projects down. As for salaries, I appreciate what you're saying. I think these guys should get everything, I mean, they're, they're awesome, they're, they're great. They should get everything that they deserve. But my job here is to defend the educators. And I think we could say the same thing about the teachers. And I could cite specific examples of teachers that have left the district and gone, you know, five minutes in, in. and gone, you know, five minutes in in one direction or another to get more money. If you look at North Brookfield, which is right there, which is much smaller than us. They get about five thousand dollars more per per step, and they're, they're tiny. So, you know, I I I get what you're saying, but I I think it holds true for the educators as well. So, to your point, the capital expenses are very, very limited. But, you know, I I just wanna make sure that people understand, what was the raises for the the teachers for the past three years? One, one and a half, two?
Two and a half.
One, one and a half?
Twenty-three.
Okay, so.
Two and a half, for twenty, FY twenty-three.
So, it's one, one and a half, two and a half, okay? That that's, that's what they settled on. And I'd be glad to give you a ten-year summary. I can guarantee you, nothing's exceeded two and a half. They they are reasonable rates, okay? And there were a couple of times where the teachers have taken zero, and I know, because I hear it all the time when when we're negotiating. But you're also looking at, and I know it's going up for everybody, the price of oil. I mean, I outlined this in my previous PowerPoint. The price of oil, the price of electricity, I mean, the cost of doing business for just about everything. And everybody's seen that across the board, I'm not telling you that you don't know.
So, so, so the next biggest challenge from, besides the tuition that you talked about, the special education students. What what is the next biggest challenge that that your budget faces?
Dealing with COVID too. So, kids have lost, in in my opinion, not completely. But there have been extraordinary challenges for for two years with COVID. We're trying to deal with learning loss. That's why the federal and the state government are are giving us these one-time funds to deal with learning loss.
No, I mean like dollars, what's the, what's the biggest challenge, the dollars figures?
You you cited.
Special education.
It's all special.
All special education.
Pretty much.
There's nothing below that, what's the next biggest one after that?
Utilities, fuel costs.
Fixed, you know, utilities costs, okay, expenses, general operating expenses?
I mean, you.
And then then salaries?
Well, you got the contractual obligations, but, you know, one and a half percent of a large number is a large number. Yeah, I mean, we're the biggest after.
Can I just ask, what would you guys maybe suggest as a place that we need to look at fine tuning our our numbers? I mean, some of this, the special ed stuff, we can't do really.
I I know, and I understand that. You guys are kind of stuck in a rock and a hard place. But when we look at numbers, numbers that you presented to us, okay, in the booklet. And I understand you updated your numbers now. And when we look through this book booklet, it just, it's hard to see how you're asking for more. When it appears that you didn't even spend what you received. And you ended up with an excess of of that amount.
But are you looking at the bottom line, or are you just looking at each line? Because if you look at the bottom line, it might make a little bit difference.
I'm going by line by line.
Yeah, well, you might have.
So, when you go by line by line, you're looking at it, and you say, okay, hundred there, yeah, a hundred thousand here. Okay, two hundred fifty thousand there, another hundred thousand. And you start looking at like, okay, all this money's not being used. But then you, you say, and you, and D, you only have two hundred fifty thousand that carried over. And I'm looking at one line that looks like you carried over a million dollars to a quarter. Or almost a million dollars to a quarter.
Right.
And then that million dollars gets spent in one quarter?
But if you're, if you look at even the budget report that I gave you tonight. You may have an excess of twenty-five thousand in one account, and you've got a deficit of forty thousand in another account. Your bottom line number's still gonna be the same, because I'm gonna end up doing a budget transfer after the school committee asked me to transfer the money to make that line balance out.
So, what you're doing is you're taking, you're taking that million dollars that you have an excess of and doing a line item transfer to another offsetted account to fill a deficiency.
Correct.
To offset your balance.
But your bottom line still ends up with being with a zero balance in all your, like, your transfers or adjustments. Like, on this report I gave you, you'll see, there's an adjustment column. And that's where you're gonna see where I may have taken it out of one account, but I put it into another account. So that your bottom line adjustments still end up being zero adjustments. Your budget total still ends up being the same budget total. But you may have a deficit in one account, and you have a surplus in another account.
So, we just got this one tonight, a little while ago. So, again, none of us had real time to sit here and go through and analyze every line on this one.
So, I think if you look at this though, and and kind of compare it to your budget book. You'll, you might see where we really did spend that million dollars in that last quarter.
Can I ask, so, Quabah Regional Middle High School, middle, yeah, middle school, high school. So, something like three oh nine, technology is going up seventeen percent.
What page?
Uh, nine, page nine. Three thirty, student activities going up almost sixty percent, fifty-eight percent. Like, what's, I'm just picking on some of the bigger ones. Can you talk about those two, technology and student activities?
Technology is for some new software programs that they have to have. It's new licensing and stuff that they have to have for the high school. For some of their new software programs that they're running for next year. And what was the other, the student activities?
Yeah, three thirty.
Um, there's an additional twenty thousand dollars in next year's budget because of paying our mentors. We got a grant of only twenty-four thousand dollars for our mentors for this year. And we've already spent twenty-eight thousand dollars, and we still have the second half of the year to pay. So, we are going to have to use a different grant for this year in FY twenty-two to make up for the additional twenty-four thousand. So, to kind of adjust for it for next year's budget, I put the twenty thousand dollars into the student activities for FY twenty-three. So, we don't have to use a different grant again next year. Again, trying not to use one-time use funds.
Another question I have, so. We lost connection.
A storm taken out our connection.
I'm recording manually, but just.
WCAT twelve, do you have any issues with your stuff? We keep on having communication errors. You are?
Who are you talking to? You see the camera, it says yes or no?
They wag the camera.
Oh, okay. So, so the mentors are required by the state, and Sherry's exactly right on that one. We did use a grant to offset that, and we ran into trouble and had to do a transfer because.
Our internet keeps cutting out too, so.
It does.
Cable connection staying, it shuts off the internet.
Just, I just, because we're gonna get complaints about this. People are gonna be very upset that they're listening to this and we keep on cutting out on them.
I just came back.
So, whenever the Wi-Fi is off, I'm recording manually years old.
Yeah, and we, we got the broadcast, it's still.
Recording in progress.
So, even if like cable lines went out, we would still have our recording of it as well.
Okay, you're gonna re-broadcast that and put it out on on YouTube and stuff too?
Yeah, I'll be on YouTube. I've been posting a link to Facebook, and we'll re-broadcast it on the channel.
If you can, just put in something on Facebook if you're trying to listen into the meeting. That we're having technical difficulties because of loss of internet because of the storm.
Okay.
If you could just let everybody know, so people at least understand what's going on, and we're not doing this on purpose.
Yeah, yeah, definitely do that.
Just don't want any, thinking somebody was trying to sabotage the meeting.
So, the thirty dollar per student figure?
Yes.
Is, is that a day per student?
Per day, or is that the year, per student, per year?
That's per year, like, yeah, yeah. So, they they actually just doubled that again.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask.
Yeah, so they, they, it went from thirty to sixty dollars. So, for us, I think it was thirty-two thousand seven hundred dollars for every kid. I mean, that's, that's your issue, I mean, we're, we're.
So, literally, we get thirty dollars per student, so if we have a thousand kids, we get thirty thousand, that's it.
So, that, I mean, I I get it, like, we go back, I I completely understand that. If you look at other districts where they're getting four hundred and fifty dollars per student. I mean, that was in the slide too. That the 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 state formula is just, in my opinion, not fair. And and it's putting us, it's pitting department against department. I mean, that's, that's the issue, that is the real issue, that's the problem.
And 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 all of us, I think we all agree to that. There's definitely some, whatever, whatever the state is thinking. It's not being fair to the smaller towns.
Correct.
It's very clear. It seems like the cities, inner cities gets much more money than the rural towns than we do. And we still have students, we still have educations to provide. We still gotta meet up with the state standards, state mandates and anything else. The state deems that they need us to do for education or whatever else falls within school's purview. So, we understand that, it's extremely unfair. We've addressed that, we've spoken to Todd Smola about it. We expressed our concerns about that, okay? I think it's very hard for anybody to debate that thirty dollars per student, per year, is enough to run, you know, deal with the students. That's one day, one day per student.
Yeah, no.
And how many, how many school days are there?
And and compound that, so, compound that by thirteen years. I've been here thirteen years, with the exception of one year, I mean, that that's essentially what we've been dealing with. So, it's all coming to a head now, because that's thirteen, over a decade of of, you know, doing the 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 same thing over and over. You know, thus my comment, rewind and play every year, it's.
Again, I understand your your situation, and you're in a hard place. And we definitely feel for you, Brett, we do. You know, we're getting it too, you know, because we have the answer to the voters too. And voters are upset about numbers going up. And 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 it is kind of pitting departments against each other. Because at some point, we gotta take care of the police. Some point, we gotta take care of fire. We gotta take care of the the people in the building, we gotta take care of highway, we gotta take care of sewer department. We have to give something to these folks, because if not, we're gonna lose them. And we can't keep up with licensing requirements and everything else that's being put on us in these professional jobs, okay? Same thing with you guys. We absolutely agree, your teachers deserve more money. They should have more money, and I'm not afraid to say that, okay? They deserve more money, okay? But, you know, we, it's, it's, it's a balancing scale. And we can't keep on giving to school all the time. You know, we gotta give to somebody else once in a while to keep them happy and keep them going, keep those departments going. So, yeah, you could say we're pitting departments against each other, and we're not doing that on purpose. We're not trying to do that, but we gotta balance a scale here. And in between, it's the taxpayers. And the taxpayers are sending their money on each side of that scale. And we're constantly trying to balance it, and when you drop one point six million dollars on us in a year. That scale shifts hard. And when we got obligations to losing, losing employees, on the other side. We're sitting here like, okay, now we're literally losing employees because we're not paying enough in our town no more. We're constantly playing catch-up. And as soon as we get new people, people are complimenting how professional our police department are. How professional our fire department are. You know how we keep those professionals here? We pay them so they wanna stay. If we train them, get them, hey, great guy. See ya, I just got a new job. You know, I'm over the town line making ten thousand dollars more a year. You can't fault them. You can't fault somebody for that, doing that. You know, just like with teachers, you're playing the same balancing game. You know, the teachers, they can get more money elsewhere. You know, it's, it's hard to do, and the state is not giving us any help. It, it's a very difficult situation. And I don't know if you're on anti-anxiety medication or anything like that. But I probably would be in your position. You know?
So, I I think we can have a very serious conversation with the school committee on on the twenty-fifth, and and we can outline some options. And, you know, bring it back and and go from there. Obviously, those numbers are gonna come down, and it's gonna help for next year.
The the problem is we need something before, because we have to post what your minimum's gonna be, okay? Because we get, that's, that's one of the issues we gotta look at, is you're asking above minimum for our contribution. And we gotta look at what that is. Now, what what what's that actually, as far as above minimum? If we give you and we say zero for minimum, we sit there and say, we're gonna give you zero for above minimum. What does that do to your school?
Devastation, absolute devastation. I mean, I I'll lay it out for you, it's not going to be good. Like, you're going to, there's no parents and teachers here tonight. I can absolutely guarantee you, when you, you're asking us, what would that mean? A cut of what, a million dollars or more? That, what do we, what, when we cut staff, and we have cut staff over the past thirteen years. I can give you that list, I know you don't have the history, we have. I think we budget, what, it it's two for every three staff, because you have to pay unemployment, and it's what, fifty grand? So, that's what, twenty staff?
Probably, close to it.
And and that's, that's, that's a, that's a lot.
Because don't forget, you would be cutting your bottom-dollar staff. You're not gonna be able to cut your staff that's on the top step, because they have seniority. So, you're gonna be cutting your fifty thousand dollar employees. So, it's gonna take a while to add up to that many.
So, that's a lot more employees.
I think statutorily, I don't believe the towns can do that, because it would devastate us. I think what would happen is what's happened in other districts, and I'll pick on Quabah. You'd go to a one-twelfth budget, which means that we're submitting monthly reports to the Department of Education. In thirteen years, we haven't done it. We've, we've escaped that, but we'd go to a one-twelfth budget, and it'd basically be every month that, and then.
But it's our FY twenty-two budget, it's what we get.
And then what would happen is the state could potentially come in. We'd probably go to a district meeting where you'd have people from Warren, people from Westbrookfield. All, like, a one, a one-town meeting for both towns, if that makes sense?
We did that in the past once.
Yeah, so that was prior to my time, I think it was two thousand five, six, maybe. But I, unfortunately, I've never gone there. I I think if we can do anything to avoid that, it's best-case scenario. But my understanding, after that, if that doesn't come, if that doesn't work out. Then the the commissioner of education can come in and set a budget for for the town. And it's a lot of ugly PR. I think when that happened before, I don't think they got to the point with the commissioner coming in and setting the budget for the town.
There was a resolution at that meeting.
There was a resolution at town meeting, but my understanding, and you know much better than I do, because I wasn't here. It was ugly for everybody.
Yeah.
So, we, we, it's, nothing.
It wasn't fun.
Nothing that I want to be part of. I want to work with you, I wanna work with the town of Westbrookfield. I want to work with you, I wanna work with, uh, town of Westbrookfield. Every year, we've done it for thirteen years. We can get there, I, I'm confident that we can. And, you know, I mean, we share the pain, we share the pain, it is what it is. Um, but we, we can get there. The other thing that I would say about town meeting is my understanding is that for several years in a row, more often than not, that number is amended on town meeting floor. And that's through workshops, when we meet with both towns, we bid everybody in a room and we say, okay, you know, this is what we can live with and this is what we can't. And we come to some sort of compromise. Done it for thirteen years. I'd like to do that again, I think we can get there.
Well, I, I definitely like to do that and, you know, we did reach out to Westbrookfield. Um, and we're opening dialogue with them about the school budget.
Right.
Um, cause, you know, I guess they have some concerns too. Um, and you're, you're used to this. It's, it's every year.
It's every year.
It's every year. And, you know, I wish it didn't have to be like this. I really did. Yeah, I'd love to bring in more commercial work, you know, businesses in here and help the town with revenue and we're trying, we're working that. It's not gonna happen tomorrow though. It's gonna take time to do and we're in the progress of making that happen. And all of us, we're working our butts off. You know, a lot of people don't see what we're doing behind the scenes for this stuff, but we're constantly doing stuff and I know Jim's part of it too now and thank God we have him because, you know, with just us doing it part-time, it's, it's a lot of work.
I think we have a meeting set for May tenth. I don't know if that's too late. Um, I mean, that's what, four days before the, the town meeting, but that's when, um, the advisory board in Westbrookfield I'm meeting with. Um, I don't know if we could pencil that in for, for now and if we could do one prior, I would suggest.
We'd definitely like one much sooner.
Yeah.
When is their, uh, town meeting?
It's not till June, they don't do it till first week in June. They, they postpone it because the numbers get clear.
Move our town meeting later in the year.
That's, that's, that's come up in the past and the people in Westbrookfield say, why does Warren do it so early? Because Westbrookfield used, it used to be on the same night. I used to go from place to place. And they, they delay it purposely because the numbers get clear. You know, so, in all due respect, like, the numbers that we're getting from the state are changing too. So, it gets clearer the later you go.
And we've always just had them in May.
Yeah, I know, but we may need to rethink that. It's too late now, we have to do it next year.
Well, we'd have to put another article forward, changing town meeting again.
Yeah, we could do it.
From a sad day to a sad day in June now.
We could do that at the special though, if we wanna think about, you know, I don't know, if we wanna do it now, but for next year.
You can't do it now.
Nope.
So, we got what we have now.
Yeah, we have to look at it.
So, they're looking at May fourth?
May tenth.
May tenth.
Right, Jerry. I'm just going off my, oh, yes, I do have it here.
I don't need the advisory, the new.
I've got it, May tenth, six o'clock at the Westbrookfield Town Hall. And, uh, again, rewind and play, I mean, we've done this, I think it was the last couple of years we've done it in the town hall. And first it gets heated and then everybody calms down and we get through it. If, if we could pencil that in and, and I can, what, the other thing that I can do, Dave, to your point, I'd like to do it earlier too. Talk to them and see if I can come up with, uh, an earlier date that works with everybody, but at least we'll have one day where we're all together planned. And, I mean, we can obviously work with updated information as we get it. Put that on my schedule.
Yeah.
Awesome. I'd just like to say, you guys are doing a great job and I appreciate that. Um, we'll work together, we'll get it done. We don't wanna go to a district meeting, we don't want it to get ugly. We'll, we'll, we'll come to some sort of compromise, we will.
Basically, we're in the same boat.
Yes, I get it. And I'll, I'll share the message with the school committee on the twenty-fifth and that number's coming down. Yes.
And again, if Bill Gates is listening, he wants to hear from Warren. We'd love to have you move to our small, quaint town.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Wouldn't you be surprised if you actually?
I almost like get an email, hey, you got a property out there? It's Bill. Like, yeah, you can buy my house, three hundred million dollars. So, do you have any questions?
No, I don't, I don't have any questions now.
I think we gotta absorb the new budget.
Right, yeah.
And looking at. Do you have anything else?
No, sir.
Jim?
I'm not sure.
Ethan, and I understand, I always ask you to do this, put the pencil to the paper.
We're doing.
Working numbers.
Yep.
So, that additional report you wanted me to create, do you want me to wait until after the twenty-fifth? When we have that meeting to give you more updated numbers on that report?
No, I think we need to.
Yeah, cause, yeah, it'll take a while to digest it, so.
We wanna be able to go with the numbers because, you know, again, we're looking at, you know, when you hand us a book one night and you, here's my budget, you run through a PowerPoint and then we all go home. We were listening to your PowerPoint and everything, trying to absorb the numbers. So, when we go home and we start looking at, okay, let's look at the numbers here. Okay. Now, I'm starting to see inconsistencies here, things that just don't look right. So, that's why I bring you back in and then you just drop another one on us. And now we gotta digest that one now. Um, and look at those numbers because they're different from what you had in the book and a different format too. So.
I can show you this report that I have now, but it's not any updated. But just to show you what the new report will look like. See how it's divided up by those program codes?
Yeah.
That's what's in the first column of that budget book.
Right, okay, yeah, that, that's.
So, it'll be in this format.
Mm-hmm, okay. With the budget, yeah.
With the correct numbers, yeah.
Okay.
With the actual year-to-date numbers and all that.
Mm-hmm.
That's kind of what you want to.
Yeah, and, well, in the budget too, right, your FY twenty-three budget.
Yep, yep, it'll be in this far column here.
Okay. So.
Yeah, that'll give us a lot more accurate numbers than right now.
Yeah, and then it has the locations, the ten thousand dot five, like I, I told you, it was Quabbe.
Yeah.
So, it, it'll be divided up by all of the ten thousand dot fives will be together and then each program code will be listed for the totals. Okay?
Are you ready to touch it?
What's, what's the, um, third segment in your account numbers?
Third segment?
Those are the DESI codes that we have to report on our end-of-year report.
Okay, so, those don't really help us. And then the fifth segment?
Um, those are what we call object codes. The, like, anything that starts with a two is usually your special ed numbers, like, if it has a two-ten, two-hundred, anything like that, those are your special ed. Um, the eight-thirty ones, which you shouldn't see on here, are like grant locations or object codes.
Okay.
They're object codes that DESI also gives us. And then the last four digits, before the two last digits, those are also DESI codes that they give us. That's specifically like a six-one-six-six is gonna be your transportation codes.
Yeah, okay.
They, they're all set up with specific formats that DESI gives us, that we have to report on on our end-of-year report in those different formats.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You guys have anything further?
Nope. Hi, I'm good.
All right, um, I think we're gonna digest these numbers and probably have another meeting with you. Be great if we could have a meeting with Westbrookfield too. Um, and, you know, go over some of the numbers with them and see what we can come up, come up with for something that's not, you know, we're, we're not trying to destroy schools.
I guess.
You know, we, we're trying to help the school, but we also have to make sure the numbers are being applied correctly.
We'll get there, we always do it, every year.
Yeah.
And every year I've had a budget and this is gonna be the first one without one, so. We'll get there.
All right, you doing okay?
I'm doing fine, piece of cake.
Oh, then we're not being tough enough.
Let me say, yeah, all right. No, we'll get there. I mean, it's, it's, it's what we do. Okay.
Great. Well, thank you very much for coming in tonight. You wanna hang out for the rest of the meeting again, but.
You don't want to hear bills when we pay bills, it's really the best part.
Yeah, we gotta pay all our bills now. Okay. So, March reports for police, fire and emergency management team. Okay. So, for fire, uh, this is for March two thousand twenty-two. You had twenty-nine calls in March, one alarm activation, eight motor vehicle accidents, five medical assists, structure fire, two illegal burns, five investigations, oil burner equipment, mutual aid one, carbon monoxide one, and then canceled calls for. The ambulance had sixty-two calls and ten that had ALS intercepts required. And you had some smoke, propane and oil burner inspections. Uh, you guys held training on brush fire equipment scenarios and trainings for your newly sworn junior firefighters. Good duh, job. And you continue with the budget. Um, how are the new newly sworn firefighters, the juniors?
Actually, ironically, the, the, uh, two juniors had their very first brush fire today. So, they were with us in Palmer. So, we took them, uh, took them with us and they, they did a fantastic job under our direction and everything. So, ended up being us, Wilberham, Palmer, Fonzville, Three Rivers, uh, Ware. So, there was like six or seven communities that had to come in for that, for the manpower. So, we were tied up most of the afternoon with that, but, uh, the two juniors that were there for that did a fantastic job. We actually, ironically, uh, the Quabbe, uh, class, for the fire class, was, came down to the station today for a field trip. Today was their big day. They went through truck equipment, uh, they did ladder, uh, rescue operations out at the station. We built a prop down there, so they were down there, they did search and rescue evolutions. We smoked out the whole building, uh, you know, to, uh, you know, to simulate, you know, the, uh, low visibility event and actual smoke. So, they were there the entire day and just as we were finishing the evolutions, we got towed for the fire in Palmer. So, uh, it worked out good. We grabbed them and, and we sent the rest of the kids back to Quabbe with the two juniors that are sworn in with us and technically, our members went with us to Palmer and they did a fantastic job, so.
Where'd you do all the training?
Right at station. Yep, we just took them down to, we, uh, they left Quabbe, they were dismissed from Quabbe, they all came down to the station and we built a loft down there so we can do ladder bailouts, ladder, you know, evolutions, uh, we can tie, tie off ropes and do rope exercises and stuff. So, we have a couple of little basic things and we have some props down there that simulate, you know, having to go through a wall, like you, you're rescue yourself kind of a deal, you know, break through a wall, get into another room in an emergency. Uh, you know, so, they went through those basic evolutions today and they had a, a great time. So, uh, other than setting off our smoke alarms, everything went well. So, that's fake smoke, there's, we use smoke machines, so, uh, you know, no different than Halloween display, but it, it gets the point across and they had a great time and, and then they were able to go on a call after that. So, uh, it worked out well, but they're doing very, very well.
Very good. No, it's very good. You get a good program started there and I commend you chief on, you know, getting that set up and making it happen. You had a vision.
They did a nice write-up on it on the last Ware River News that was, uh, on the front page and everything, so they got, uh, they got their names out there and everything, so I know that they were excited to, to see that, so, uh, we got some real positive feedback from that, so, it's going in a good direction.
Very good. Okay. And the police. Um, yours is also for March twenty-twenty-one.
Type it.
Twenty-twenty-two, right?
Do that every now and then.
So, you had one thousand six hundred and forty-four calls logged, uh, six felony investigations, ninety-one incident reports. You had six on-view arrests, one arrest warrant, uh, seventeen summons, total arrests, twenty-four, protective custody's four, juvenile arrests, three, motor vehicle stops, one hundred and sixty-four, and motor vehicle citations, so ninety-six.
I just want the motor vehicle stops to go up. We're running that distracted driving.
Yeah.
Program.
Very good. Yeah. And so, in town, please don't be talking on your cell phone and, you know, texting while you're driving because, you know, the police department's out looking for you. You know, they're gonna stop you for it. And you could be one of the ninety-six unlucky fellows next time and getting a citation for it. But, good job. Um, your motor vehicles?
You notice I screwed up my Humvee?
Yeah.
It's the same as last month, I just must've put the two-four at the end.
Okay. Yeah.
Eight, eight, eight point two. Eight.
So, all right, those are no surprise. You guys attended, uh, chief's meeting for this domestic violence task force?
Yeah, we meet with them every quarter at the Ware PD.
You did the veteran's service for the, um, flag burning ceremony, seen you guys there.
We were able, actually, Peter Hastings, when he was cleaning, found a bunch of old flags that we were able to dispose appropriately because of that.
Yeah, it was a good event. We get a lot of flags out of service that, you know, we had a few here in town that were not in good service. We had some that were stained, if you notice, we got these nice new flags now, nice and clean, they're not, I don't know, coffee or something spilled on them, whatever, I don't know what happened with those flags, they were just, so, we, we had to take those out of service and that was a good event. And it was the first time we get to meet Jim's wife, so.
That's right.
So, very good. Uh, on the fourteenth, you know, you had to meet the town administrator. Uh, Lieutenant Early spoke, um, two health classes at Quabbe.
Yep, they were doing.
He was giving health classes at Quabbe?
Him and I went and spoke with them because they were doing, um, a block on alcohol. Now, it affects you, so we went up there and we, uh, we went over fuel laws with the juveniles and alcohol and then we went through, um, what we do on an O E Y stock.
Okay. I know, I know when we do the fields of variety testing, we get a couple lucky volunteers to get impaired for us.
Yes, we do that in the county.
You didn't do that, you didn't do that in school?
Mr. Duff was our victim of the second class and he passed.
Okay. So, yeah, it's always fun. You sit there and like, all right, drink more, drink more.
We asked, the first class was great, they interacted, they had someone that volunteered to be the driver, second class.
Yeah.
Didn't say nothing, they owned volunteers, so we stole Mr. Duff. Didn't say nothing. They owned volunteers, so we stole Mr. Duff.
All right, so you attended some insurance training with M I A, MIA.
I try and do that because.
And you did sexual harassment, public safety?
Yeah, their training's nice. They supposedly give us a discount or a premium when I do them.
And also we get, you have special grants, and you get special equipment if you have denim.
I try and take them anytime I see them.
Those are good classes. Okay, and you got the A E D through a grant?
Yep.
Very good. So now you got three brand new ones.
What's A E D?
Huh?
What's A E D?
Automatic Electronic发生器?
Thank you.
You're welcome. You didn't think I knew that, did you?
No, I'm pretty sure. We know it. We share with everybody.
Yes. Yeah, when we use acronyms, we are, yeah, we gotta be able to define what they are. So good job. Been busy. Okay, now, emergency management report on three-seventeen. They had hazard mitigation workshop via Zoom. Three-twenty-four, met with town's animal control officer, go to plan, plans, current plans of animal sheltering, and it's an event of a disaster. Nobody ever thinks about what to do with the animals. Everybody thinks about people, how to evacuate people, but nobody thinks about how to evacuate the animals, so they worked on that together. Attended quarterly E M D meeting, which was held at Ag One. Was the first person meeting since COVID. Updates for M I M A. And about equipment and available communities and emergencies and planned events. Also updated upcoming grants. Okay. M I M A, Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency, and E M D. Do you know what that is?
Emergency Management Director.
Okay. The director of dispatch?
Yeah.
What is it referring to? I'm sorry?
Attended quarterly E M D meeting.
Yeah, emergency management director meeting. They all meet, you know, they all meet on a monthly or quarterly basis in the area to go over different topics, but.
Dispatch has an E M D, too. It's emergency medical dispatching.
Yeah.
So wondering which one?
No, it's definitely, definitely emergency management directors meeting.
Okay, and then CERT. They had two members of CERT attending quarterly CERT meeting, which is held. Regional CERT teams, Worcester. CERT members are assisted Westbrook Field Board of Health from nine to two, passing out COVID kits for traffic flow. Then Town and War and Veterans Council for Flag Burning Ceremony downtown. They did a good job with that. Thank you very much, CERT team, for all you do. Really appreciate you. Okay. And that was that for their reports. What's that?
We have to vote on the ambulance.
Yep, that's coming up next.
But it's not in here. We don't have a motion.
What do you mean it's not on the agenda?
But you have to.
She was gonna.
I was gonna put.
Remember, she's supposed to put the motion on there?
Oh, yeah.
So we're not fumbling.
No, we got that. We've done this before. It's on here, though, so it's, we're good. All right, so we have the ambulance abatements for the second quarter of F Y twenty-twenty-two. Okay. Do you wanna make a motion?
All right, so I make a motion to accept the ambulance abatement for second quarter F Y twenty-two.
Second?
All in favor?
Richi Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes. And so we know what those are there for October, November, December. And for October, it was a total of thirty-seven thousand four hundred and forty-five dollars and fifty-seven cents. November, thirty-three thousand nine hundred and sixty-two dollars and seventy-five cents. And December, fifty-five thousand seven hundred and twenty-three dollars and ninety-seven cents. And those, basically, the insurance, those are abatements basically saying that, you know, the insurance wouldn't pay for them, they wouldn't cover those particular ambulance costs.
For that. For example, just to kind of, a very basic summary of it. Say someone has a Medicare or Medicaid for their insurance carrier. They're only required to pay two hundred and plus dollars per transport. So we bill fifteen hundred dollars for the ambulance, you know, ride for that. Insurance, Medicare, Medicaid only, by law, is only required to cover two hundred and fifty dollars roughly. We have to write off the rest of that amount because we cannot legally collect it. So that's, I mean, it differs by insurance to insurance carrier, but a lot of our patients are Medicare Medicaid patients. So unfortunately, those, you know, are lower end of the collection spectrum, and we have to write off that existing amount.
So we basically have to take the hit.
Yep.
All right. Okay, so next thing on the agenda is the warrants and bills.
I'll make a motion to pay the following bills. Valley Communications Systems for two hundred and sixty-four dollars. Marlin Capital Solutions for two thousand forty-eight dollars and thirty-eight cents. Crystal Rock for twenty-six forty-five. Comcast Business for a hundred and thirty-eight dollars and thirty-five cents. Associated Building Wreckers for eight hundred and seventy-two dollars. National Grid Gas for sixteen hundred seventy dollars and ninety-five cents. National Grid Electric for three hundred twenty-four dollars and thirty cents. Another National Grid for a hundred and four dollars and forty-nine cents. Two for Mass Corps. First is twenty-one ninety-five, and then three hundred and ninety-nine dollars and sixty-three cents. Workhorse Construction for eight hundred. Eland City Electronic Speed Signs for eleven thousand four hundred and seventy-three dollars. Two for Verizon. The first is a dollar ninety-two, and then twelve dollars and sixty-eight cents. Commonwealth of Mass for a thousand. What is this? Not to pay.
That's the amount that that grant is for, but it comes out of a grant money. It's a bill they're sending in, but it comes out.
This is C M R P C, right?
No, it's P V P C.
Oh, P V P C.
And it's for the cemeteries.
Yeah, okay, so there's a cemetery study. We just have to approve twelve hundred thirty-six dollars and forty-seven cents that they get paid that comes out of a grant.
Second?
All in favor?
Richi Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes. All right. And minutes, we have no minutes to review at this moment. And then new business. Motion to accept the Warren Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Contract.
Amendment.
Oh, sorry. Contract amendment.
It's amendment.
So I'll make a motion to accept the Warren Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Contract amended, and this is for C M R P C.
Second?
All in favor?
Richi Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes. Okay, the next thing is for old business, and that's the electric speed signs.
We got them in.
And we finally got them in.
They showed up with a trailer truck when I asked where my loading dock was.
Really?
And proceeded to unload the pallet by hand and drive, bring them home.
So you got four of them?
Four of them, yep. Four of them with four solar panels.
Okay, now you guys looking at how to set them up?
Yep.
Get them all functioning?
Figuring out how to put the solar panels up.
How big are they?
The sign themselves, or the?
Yeah, I mean, they came in on a truck, like a pallet.
Yeah, so the boxes, the actual signs probably this wide, this high. And then they had a box for each panel and a box for the bracket for the panel.
Wow, so they're pretty big.
And a box for all the batteries.
Oh, so they're good size signs then, huh?
Yeah, it's probably, they're probably about this big when they go on the pole.
So when people drive by and they can't sit there and say, oh, I didn't see it?
Right.
Yeah, they have to.
Definitely gonna see it.
Yep.
And you been looking at places we put them?
Yeah, yep. I was thinking to start out, maybe one each on the main street, one on an old Westbrook Field Road, and one on South Bridge Road.
Yeah, I was gonna say definitely South Bridge Road. People fly down that road.
Yep, and then I have the other one that's movable all the way around. These will be nice. We can put them up there and leave them there for a long time.
Years of time.
And then you get the data from them, too, so you can.
Yeah, as long as, and I believe, as long as it's like the one I have, which I believe they are, it download, we can download the data. I think.
Actually, they make you download an app.
Right.
They give the data right on in the app.
I think the new ones, the four new ones, you can actually.
Yeah, there's an app. When I spoke with the guy, he went through it. We download an app, and he can require a chief who anybody else can control and see all the data.
That's very good. So now you can sit there and see when people are speeding.
Yep.
And when people are like, you know something, I'm gonna test how fast I can go on this road and see if it registers. You know, ninety-five miles an hour on South Bridge Road.
Good thing is that.
Good thing is you got a cruiser sitting right there at the end there waiting for.
We can cut the speeds off so people don't do that.
Okay.
Don't flash.
All right. No challenges, huh?
Yeah.
It's a good thing.
Yeah, all right, those are exciting. When do you think you have them up?
Come up? Open, yeah. I gotta get some parts for them to hold, put up the panels and actually have to buy straps for the board.
Right. Doesn't have all that stuff in it together?
No, so you gotta get like live bolts to put in for the panel. The one I have now, I have, I bought straps that go around the bracket that holds it, and it straps onto a telephone pole.
Okay.
Let me know if you need some help.
I might.
Just, you know where I am.
Go ahead.
Very good. All right, so that's exciting. Do you guys have any old business?
No, no, sir.
No, I was excited about the Steven signs.
Yeah, no, I'm excited about them, too. Kept on asking about them. We're like, when are they gonna get here?
I told you May first, and they got up here at the end of March. I was pretty impressed. Because they told me when I called them May first. So when you told me that they were there, I went, what?
I got a mystery bell. I was like, what the heck is this for?
The good thing is that we got this approved last meeting, town meeting, and now we can make them work.
Yep.
For the safety for everybody.
Very good. All right, so no more old business. So town administrator report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the board. Thank you, department heads and the members of the public and the viewers on Zoom. Mr. Chairman, if you could see, I kind of put together a little bit of analysis from our previous discussion, our last week's meeting, when we talked about free cash and we talked about, you know, our upcoming budget season and the budget growth patterns and its impacts to town services. So this is just a very general overview of our last five fiscal years in operating budgets, which includes our local contributions to the schools. And as you could see, from fiscal year seventeen to fiscal year twenty-one, that five period, five-year period snapshot, you know, the town's budget in fiscal year seventeen was eight point three million. Fiscal year eighteen, eight point five million. Fiscal year nineteen, eight point eight million. Fiscal year twenty, eight point nine million. Fiscal year twenty-one, eight point nine million five. Fiscal year twenty-two, our current fiscal year, we're at nine point four. So the proposed budget has many fluctuations in it. It's very, it's so much currently like a fluid document in terms of, there's a couple unknowns. Obviously, unknowns is a big piece of the puzzle of the schools, as we talked about tonight, and the direction that they're headed in. Some of the other unknowns is, you know, some of the vegetarian items in terms of our new wage classification scale. If that will be recognized at town meeting is an unknown. So basing it upon, if you were to take the same number, virtually the same numbers from what the schools were in fiscal year twenty-two, and you transpose them over into fiscal year twenty-three, given the current proposed wage scale, you're looking at an estimated budget of about ten point six million dollars. And so if you go on the growth patterns for between fiscal years, the budget growth pattern has been modest, you know, up until as of recently. From two thousand and seventeen to fiscal year eighteen, there was a budget growth of about two point seven percent. From fiscal year nineteen to fiscal year twenty, there was a one percent budget growth. From fiscal year twenty-one to fiscal year twenty-two, there was a four point eight percent budget growth. And basing it upon the estimates of fiscal year twenty-two during, to the proposal of fiscal year twenty-three, you're seeing a budget growth of about eleven point eight percent estimated, which is kind of on the higher side. And that proposed fiscal year twenty-three budget includes the new wage classification scale, which has been endorsed by the Finance Committee as of this past Tuesday. If this wage scale goes into effect, the town will see an estimated increase in overall salaries totaling about three hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty-three. Now that, coupled with the annual increases, will continue to grow into fiscal year twenty-four and twenty-five. And the general operating expenses in fiscal year twenty-three increased to an estimate, an estimated of four hundred and twenty thousand dollars as opposed to what was realized in twenty-twenty-two. And then also I attached, that just came out from the Department of Revenue, the Division of Local Services, cherry sheet estimates. They give you the governor's proposal for cherry sheet is one point one million four. And the House recommendation number just came out today is one point one four five. There's a little bit of an increase there, not much. But what you wanna stick with is probably to budget with the governor's. A house budget, the house budget always seems to be a little bit more advantageous than the governors. And then finally, you'll also have the Quabog cherry sheet also came out, again with the House recommendation and the governor's recommendation. Governor's was at about, almost ten-one, and then the House is at ten-one, a little more. Ten million one hundred thirty-six thousand. So that's just to give you kind of a gauge as to the direction the town is heading. I know it's very much overview in terms of numbers, but there has been significant growth in the budget as of recent years. You know, and a lot of it's gonna be predicated on what are the final school numbers for the above, for the above minimum? If there is a, if there is a contribution. And, you know, there is, you know, there's other considerations to be made aware of as budgets grow. The, the budget pattern in, um, in, in, in our budget, in our local budget, the, the wages we have to continue to watch and monitor, uh, to monitor that as well. So, uh, this is just an overview to kinda give you an idea as to, uh, what the past history was, where we're, where we're headed towards into the future. We do have a upcoming, uh, joint meeting, uh, with finance, uh, on Saturday at nine o'clock. So, um, there was another, uh, matter in the omnibus budget that was brought up during FinCom, which was a, uh, uh, training for the, uh, new town clerk. After FinCom had some questions regarding that, uh, I investigated that a little bit further in terms of, uh, the needs and necessities of the department. I spoke with the town clerk, the current town clerk and the, um, the person running for that, that position. And they were both confident now, after giving some time and some, you know, some thought about it, that they don't really feel as though it's necessary to have the ten thousand dollar line item in the town, uh, uh, town clerk's, uh, line, uh, for training. So we're gonna get rid of that, um, and we're gonna report that to FinCom also. So.
A little bit of savings.
A little bit of savings.
Everybody, everybody helps.
Yeah, that's important.
It would appear that the. Oh, hold on one second. Joe. So do you have anything else there?
No, so I entertain any questions from any members of the board.
Do you have any question?
No, I don't think so.
Do you have any questions?
Not at this time, sir.
Okay, all right.
It would appear that the annual budget increases is roughly about three hundred thousand every year, which even I would consider reasonable. The main sticking point is gonna be the school budget. Because we don't know what their final figure is gonna be.
All right, and that's what we're looking at right now, Joe, and that's why we're trying to. First of all, can you identify yourself for everybody and?
Joe Conrad, possible future selectman.
Okay. And one of the things is we're looking at the school budget. That's why we had them in here tonight to be able to go over more specifics because the school budget is always a very difficult one. Because it is such a large budget and it's, we have a required amount that we have to pay. Each time. And we all, their budget is always gonna go up. It doesn't go down, it's always going up more and more. So having to pay that budget, um, it's gonna arise a lot of questions. And questions through residents, through us. And when we started really going through the budget and looking at it, we all started having, um, questions. And that's why we had them come in here to answer some of those questions, clarify things and why. And, and we still have a lot of questions that we need to answer. And we got a new updated version of the budget and we're gonna go through that again, you know. Yeah, we're gonna go through that one with a fine toothed cone also and identify any inconsistencies that we might find or try to get a better understanding of what the budget is. Unfortunately, the state doesn't give us much money. You know, they, they were giving us thirty dollars per student per year. Now we're getting sixty dollars per student per year. Yeah, they doubled it, but now you could pay two days for a student. You know, and, and when you've got students at the school that are requiring three hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars for the year, that just ate up all that money that we get for all our students. So it's very difficult to balance that because it's, it's a very much tax-based system. Unless we can get grants or different types of things that can come in. And unfortunately, they don't come in till after we vote and we have our meetings. That's why we're considering, maybe we wanna move the meeting to June.
Next year.
Next year. We can't do it this year. That Karen almost had a stroke on us with that. Sorry, she's been doing a lot of work. So we might have to move the, look at moving the meetings to June for our annual town meetings. So this way, the school budgets can have all those expenses applied and we could have a better understanding of school budgets. Because right now, it's, it's hard to pick apart the school budget if you don't know what incentives or grants or whatever they're getting, uh, from the state and federal government. Because they don't know until those numbers come out. And unfortunately, they don't come out till after we have meetings or we've actually posted what the minimum contribution's gonna be, um, to vote on. So it's, it's kinda difficult for them to do that.
Well, you see, that's why it's always better to question stuff and not be a rubber stamp.
Right. And I, I don't think this board's ever been a rubber stamp. And we, we, I know, I see. You know, we, we got, we, we've been picking apart the budgets and looking at, we've called in every department, gone over their budgets. We've looked at everything, looked at where, where expenses could be. Covid costs for supplies, we've been cutting those out of budgets because we have an abundance of supplies that we can provide those departments for that. So they don't really need the budget for those things. So we're saving a thousand dollars here, fifteen hundred dollars there. It, it doesn't seem like, like much, but it's, after a while it adds up. And we're trying to find, fine tune those numbers. And with the assistance of FinCom, they've been working hap- happily with us and, you know, we, we got, now we're gonna be having hopefully, um, approximately three hundred thousand dollars in, in our.
Free cash.
Free cash. So we can carry over. So the hopes are to be able to, and we've identified some capital planning projects that we can do. We've helped fix our, our pay scale systems. Because the pay skills, we had to do the pay skills this year because it was the last year for them. So we're going to the new fiscal, fiscal year, we have to have those pay skills updated. And, you know, that, that was an increase in our budget. But it has to be done because we're, we've fallen in a system where we're constantly, um, training, you know, training departments, training police officers, training firefighters and losing them to towns that pay more. And then that causes our overtime budgets to increase because now we're paying overtime to cover those costs because we don't have a person in that position anymore. Until we can hire somebody, get them to run academy and do it everything else. So we're always playing catch-up with that. And it's not fair to the departments because they're going unmanned and asking the officers that do stick around to work harder now.
Well, it's a lot of times usually late at night where Warren Police will have to ask backup from one of the neighboring towns.
And then that puts pressure on other towns to help us. And that's always gonna be a mutual aid thing, there's always gonna be something, but, you know. We have to take a pause because WCAT twelve has to switch discs. So we have to take a five-minute pause to let them. All right, we're back and now, so we'll start off where we left off.
Comments and concerns?
Mr. Conrad, did you have anything else?
No, that's all.
Okay. Well, thank you very much and, okay, any other com, well.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so that was old.
Town, town.
We did town administrator, that was comment, where our comments and concerns. Okay, so do we have any comments and concerns?
I do not. I have a couple. Just one, because we are so concerned about our budget. Uh, looking at, at a big picture, looking into the future, we, North Brookfield may join Coburg Schools. And according to them, that it's actually a, uh, benefit, talking about, you know, budgets. So just wanted to bring that on the table and there's a little bit of hope in the future if that goes forward.
Where are we with that? What's the status?
Um, the, the study has been done. And now, um, it's time that the board starts, starts to come out with an idea of how to present it to the towns.
The school board?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because, um, according to the, um, assessor, the, the people who helped do the study is now it's our job to sell the project, you know, to show everything on each town how it will benefit the town.
Okay.
Budget with, budget, you know, speaking, it will be very beneficial for the schools and of course for our budgets. But the downside is if one of the three schools, I mean, one of the three towns doesn't, doesn't pass us, it's not gonna fly. So it's really now into a, a marketing tool to, you know, explain the residents why and how this could help us. That, that's the next challenge on the equation.
I think they still have some final questions to answer too. Cause I know there were questions about transportation in there, what schools would be handling, what districts and how the drop-offs would be. Because there were questions with if students from, you know, Brookfield would be brought down and dropped out, off at a location and picked up again with buses again and then transported to the school. It was almost like they would be dropped off as a staging point and then picked up again, brought, brought to the school from there and how the buses would run or if they could continue them on directly from, from the, um, residents and bring them to the school. There were some concerns, I know, um, Brookfield had some questions about that in their selectmen, about how the, the school buses were running and, um, some, some other issues that were, that came up from the study. Because, you know, when we sat there for that training, or the, the presentation of the study on the regionalization, you know, they, they, they wanna move forward and everything. And, um, you know, they, they were just trying to work out some details on that and find, fine tune some numbers on how they were gonna do some things. I think that was my understanding, is I.
Yes, yeah.
Yes, sir.
I believe a couple of years ago, we had, uh, students doing school choice that came over from Southbridge to Warren.
Yep, the students still have school choice.
Yeah.
And we get students from other schools, but we also lose students to other schools too. So it's a back and forth. You know, we're gonna have that, if we have programs that they want and it seems like the nursing program is actually taken off because it was a hundred percent success rate for our nursing program that they had at school, is actually extremely successful. And, um, that looks like it's something that should probably target a little more because that's a very good career field. It's something we need lots of is, um, you know, people being trained in the nursing fields. And it's something that the students can leave high school and get a job with. And they can continue from there and they can get a pretty good paying job. I believe they leave as, um, CNAs, Certified Nursing Assistance, which you can make good money doing that, coming right out of high school. And that builds a good career path for you. And that's something, it costs them zero as far as college. If, if you were a student coming out of a regular high school and then going into a certified nursing assistance program, you can end up in college and then end up with tuition expenses and everything else. And then instead of coming right out of high school and having a job, now you gotta go to a couple of years of college to get that and then try to get a job. Here we got kids coming out. Here we got kids coming out and they don't have any tuition expenses or anything, and they're able to get a job at 100% success rate for those students. That's amazing. So programs like that, programs like our junior firefighter programs, all that stuff, thinking outside of the box. Being able to educate our students in school and at a young age to be able to come right out of high school and get good paying jobs. That, that's amazing. That, that's definitely a win for our town and definitely a win for the school.
So looking into the future, I think we have to keep that in mind. It's a positive thing, help for our budgets.
I think the regionalization thing, it's going to be interesting, you know. And I hope, as long as it benefits our town. You know, if at any point it turns out that it's going to cost our residents more money to do that, to regionalize, I think that's, that's a no-go for me. But if it can benefit our town, and our town, the costs go down and the school expenses go down, where we can disperse it amongst the three schools and it's more cost efficient to do, then yes. But the minute it crosses that line and it becomes at a higher expense for our residents, definitely not something I could support at that point. But it doesn't look like it's going that way. Well, hopefully, it's a win for everybody. And that's what we're trying to target.
Thank you, my second comment, it's about the activity we have with CMRPC. I would like a name for the activity, I have the pictures and I want to.
Oh, that was the.
MVP workshop. Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness.
Can somebody forward that to me?
What?
Can you send me that to me or?
Yeah. So.
That was a class, well, not the class, but the.
It's a workshop.
Event that we attend, attended on that Saturday at the senior center.
And then one last night, a follow-up one last night.
Yeah, I couldn't make that.
So basically helps us get, prepare for climate change and get grants to help us deal with climate change. It's a big deal.
Yeah. Anywhere we can get grant money and bring in those additional funds to offset our costs would be great. Because again, having things with the significant flooding that's occurring and it's just getting worse with bigger and bigger storms, more and more flooding going on, more and more populated areas, deforestation with solar, all these things going on. And we're having bigger and bigger flood events now. We've got to do, figure out some way of managing that water. And our culverts and our infrastructure is aging. And hopefully, this could help us with grant money to help offset that and repair that. Because right now, the infrastructure for a lot of these culverts, it's what, 50 years? So a lot of the culverts are degrading. If, if you look at some of the culverts along the road, their beavers are intruding in them and they're just breaking down. That's why we're getting a lot of these flooding because we can't manage the water as fast as it's coming in. So it'd be great to be able to see if we can do something with those in the future. And right now, I was talking with Jeremy Olson, and one culvert is going to cost us over a million dollars. And we have 20 of them in town that are going to be needing to be dealt with at different levels. But having just one culvert be a million dollars, that can kind of give you a sight of what it's going to be like to deal with 20 of them in various locations throughout the town. So yeah, it'd be great to get some federal funding for that. And if I need to attend a couple of days of classes and training to get that money, let it happen, I'll be there. Whatever we've got to do to get that money.
Yes, sir.
So, anything else? I don't have anything for comments and concerns. Jim?
No.
Karen? Guys?
I just had one thing real quick. I forwarded an initial email to Jim and Karen. I just wanted to expand upon a training opportunity that's coming up for, that I think might be beneficial for this town. The Department of Fire Services, the Fire Marshal's Office is, is holding a, what's called a municipal hearing officer's training, initial training that's coming up in May. And this town does not currently have a municipal hearings officer. And what that would do for us would be to allow someone like myself or BJ to issue non-criminal citations for violations of building and fire code. This is something we've done in the past. We had a municipal hearing officer many years ago, and it was somebody that we were able to get through, that went through the training in Ware. We're actually using the Ware Town Clerk as our hearing officer, but that is many years ago removed. So I think this might be a good opportunity for the selectmen to designate or see if there's interest in someone going to this training. Because if we did issue a criminal citation, I don't expect this to happen very often, hopefully it never happens. But say we have an individual that continues to burn trash or illegal burning on a regular basis, we can actually cite them a monetary amount and, which may help them come to an understanding they can no longer do this, or hopefully push them in that direction. But in the event that they appeal the citation, we need to have a municipal hearing officer in place in order for them to appeal it too. And I've been through this once before where it's literally like a little mini court thing. You come in and you sit in front of the hearings officer, you present your evidence as to what happened. They make a ruling, yea or nay, they have to pay it, you know, they enforce it. So it's just something to put on the selectmen's radar that there is an upcoming training opportunity for this community to designate somebody for that position, which would kind of help us with some of the problem properties we may have, or, you know, someone like legal burning or something, and certainly building code violations too. So BJ may be able to expand upon it more, but I just got the email from the Fire Marshal's Office, and I think it might be a good thing to look into for this particular.
So if the, the board wanted to get some more information or appoint somebody, Chief, did you have anybody in mind or?
Obviously, you know, it would have to be someone, you know, I, I've heard of town clerks doing them before. You know, there could be someone else that the board may want to come up with internally within the building. I don't know if there's any, I don't, I couldn't, I'd be lying if I said if, if I knew of any stipulations of people that can't do it. But normally, it's a municipal employee that's currently in there, but I can provide that information. I think it's at the end of May. So we have a little bit of time. I'll work on it on my end and see exactly who can be appointed and who, who can be. But it would be like a sworn officer of the town that the board would appoint.
Okay, very good. Yeah, yeah, we'll look into that.
Just give us a little more teeth to be able to deal with some issues that may come up at some point. And it would put a little bit more, you know, it would hold the feet, you know, someone's feet to the fire if they were, you know, you know, they tend to, you know, don't do that again.
If they're illegally burning, we're going to hold your feet to the fire.
Or if they're facing a hundred or $200 fine, that may, that may help them to understand that they're not going to do that act anymore, you know. So just a little something to maybe protect us a little bit more.
Very good, yeah, look into that, get more information on it.
Yeah, I'll work with Jim on that.
Thank you. She hasn't had anything else? Jim?
No, how about that?
Anybody in Zoom?
There's nobody in Zoom land anymore.
Everybody got bored?
Yeah, all left, yeah.
And they're on Facebook?
I have two of you.
And they can't comment? All right, so we have no more comments and concerns. Next meeting date is April 21st at 6:00 PM. Although we do have a meeting set with FinCom on Saturday at 9:00 AM.
Yes, you do.
So we will be doing that as a budget thing, working with FinCom. Let me just make sure I have that in my, I do, okay. All right, so our next meeting is April 21st at 6:00 PM. And. Your favorite part.
Yeah, motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Richai Hacker, aye.
Danny Bellis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.